Right, so you can see the new building more clearly because there is less trees screening along the front edge and there's lower trees. Again, you can see the building on the other side of the junction there. Looking north, this is probably the more significant view, looking north up towards Carlton Common on Winchester Road. That's the existing building there and you can see the proposed structure in the background. But you do see there that it's tucked back, so it doesn't read as a single block. It is more broken up than that. That's the existing view as it stands. And from looking west along Portsmouth Road and the Main Road Winchester Road junction, it's going to be very difficult to see the proposal due to tree foliage, existing buildings, and that until you get almost directly opposite the existing pub, you won't see much along that view. So it's a very localised impact. So that is probably where it is going to be most visible, where the existing building is already quite substantial. On that corner, as you can see there, there's just a picket fence at present time and grass verge that will be softened by hedge planting along that front edge. Just to show photos of the proposed new footpath link, this is from outside the access to the site and you've got cycle path and an island and then the main road. And the footpath is proposed along this edge, along that edge, and up to where it joins the existing footpath though along that side. So that will provide safe pedestrian passage without having to cross the road. The proposal is recommended for approval. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. So we then move on to the public participation and we have three speakers today. The first one is the parish council representative, councillor Maggie Hill. Good morning councillor Hill. You can see a clock presumably, can you? On the screen.
Excuse me Chair, we've just taken a moment to bring it up.
Why are we talking about that? Am I blocking your view of the big screen? Yeah, no, good. It's all a new arrangement to us today. So councillor Hill, can you see a clock?
Not yet.
There'll be one when councillor Hill starts speaking presumably.
Chair, I'm going to put it on here in a moment.
But councillor Hill, sitting behind.
Yes, that's right.
Need to have it turned round.
That's right. I'll alter the clock in a moment. Just bear with me please.
Excuse this few technical glitches. It's quite loud. You have three minutes anyway, in a minute when you're ready to speak. And can you turn that round?
Yeah, I'm just going to see if I can get the onscreen one working now. Yes, I can.
For anyone listening, we're trying to just sort out the clock.
Councillor Hill, are you ready?
I am.
I'm going to start the clock in a moment.
Okay, so when you're ready, the clock will start.
Thank you very much. As you know, I'm Maggie Hill representing Colton Common Parish Council. We object because MRTA 1, it's been admitted that the application doesn't comply with this policy. Scale of building exceeds capacity of existing services and infrastructure. Trifecta and Colton Common Surgeries highlight the healthcare demands that would be placed on the already overstretched resources. MRTA 4, there's no operational need for this to be placed in a countryside location. The village has lost three of its pubs in recent years, leaving only the Dog and Crook and Fish's Pond, which is a restaurant. So the application is not compliant. Policy DM 6, the site would be overdeveloped and the building noncompliant because of size, scale and layout, therefore not compliant. Public transport's not realistic to start travelling to the site. Train links 30 minutes away. One bus every hour from Faireham to Winchester, 69, doesn't go too easily and recently resumed and the service may not continue. Zellerbus is every hour east of the Hedges End. The last buses are earlier than shown in the transport study. There are no direct bus links to Chalmers Ford, Southampton or Bishopstoke. Staff and visitors will have to rely on car transport and the transport study estimates that 81.9% of visits are anticipated by car. Parking, 20 spaces planned. Care staff often work part-time, resulting in higher numbers on duty at once at peak times. Overlapping shift patterns, visitors or public transport make this untenable. There's no overspot parking available locally. Traffic backs up along Main Road from the Spring Lane junction to this site now. Hampshire are aware and prove us the needed, but it's not anticipated in the near future. The situation would be made worse. Sightly, if application is approved and Section 278 agreed to safeguard visibility and accessibility for local residents, cycleways will also need improvement in line with the MPBS priorities. However, very steep hills between this site and Faireham are unlikely to help. In summary, the application is not compliant with the city council's policies. The building is too big for the site, in the wrong place to recruit and retain staff and will overwhelm local infrastructure for health, medical resources and worsen traffic congestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, do you have any questions of clarification for councillor Hill? Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Hill, you mentioned cycleways. Where is the nearest cycleway to the location? Or is it on the road?
It's on the road.
It's on the road, thank you.
It's on the road.
Any further questions? No, oh councillor Pearson.
I think we should clarify that a little bit. The bit that comes around the junction is actually off the road. Must be coming up the Portsmouth Road, then it is on the road. The cyclist has to cross the road to go to that bit that goes around the corner where the lights are. Okay? So the answer is yes and no to your question.
Is this a question for councillor Hill?
Is that correct councillor Hill?
Yes, I believe it is.
Oh, you're just showing off your knowledge.
Well, we've got...
Of the road. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? No. So councillor Hill, thank you very much. And then we come to two supporters, Kate Chapman and Gillings, Gillings, Gillings. And you're sharing the three minutes, so if you just bear in mind that two, three minutes of this, who's going first?
And you are? I'm Anna. Anna Gillings from Gillings Planning.
Thank you. So when you're ready, the clock will start.
The clock will start.
Okay, well thank you very much for letting us speak today. We're the agents for the planning application and we just wanted to make a couple of short points. Firstly, we'd just like to commend the council and the officers and the DRP. We've worked with really positively and proactively on this application throughout the whole process. We've been actively engaged with everybody and had some really good feedback and that's really helped shape the scheme for the better. It has, we think, been a great example of how the process can really work.
We've worked hard together to amend the scheme, which has reduced the scale of massing. Sixty beds really is the minimum that is viable for a new care home to ensure the highest standards of care provided and ensuring the home is sustainable for many years to come. All new homes are of this size and provide a variety of communal spaces and enable on suites. It just can't be right to expect older residents to walk down the hall to share a bathroom, as happens in smaller converted homes. Thankfully, we've moved on from all residents just sitting in the same chair all day watching television. The home provides space and opportunity for residents to enjoy their days through fitness, tea dances and music, all matched to their individual needs of course. Sustainability has also been a key consideration from the outset and we are pleased to be able to meet the highest standards that are possible for a care home, which of course is very different to an office or a normal home. We're rightly being pushed hard by officers and we are pleased to commit to the condition. In terms of design, you will note that the officer confirms that the design and layout will not result in a cramped and overdeveloped site and it will not have a significant and adverse impact on the character and appearance of the area.
So essentially, although it is a bigger footprint than the existing building, it really is the minimum scale that we can do that's possible. With the pub closed, the care home really provides the only real option for a site where residential would not accord with the policy. We do recognise the location, but what normally happens is there'll be a travel plan and then an operator will run a minibus that will deal with staff that work out of hours. And of course, HCC don't have any objection from highways or parking from the view. So overall, we would suggest that the proposal represents a high quality development, which provides really much needed care home beds in this location. Anna, we thank you for listening and if we can answer any questions, please do.
Thank you very much. Very well managed between both of you. Questions for members? Councillor Roger?
Thank you Chair. Thank you very much for coming along. I just want to, you mentioned a travel plan and that will essentially be a minibus that goes around collecting staff and dropping them off and so on. Is that going to run all the time or just when the buses aren't running? And the buses are very minimal, aren't they? So people will have to organise their shifts around bus times, I suppose. Can I just ask also about cycle storage? So is there going to be an option for staff to cycle to work? And if so, is there somewhere safe for them to keep their bikes? Because I can't remember seeing any mention of cycle storage on the site. And the other, the final question, if I may, is about busy times. So there are times in the year when most residents will expect a visitor, Christmas, public holidays, weekends even. I'm assuming that most of these residents will have families around and because of the minimal bus service, they will be expecting to drive to the home and there's nowhere else to park. So although for normal functioning of the home, 20 spaces may be enough, what is going to happen at busy times when most residents will get at least one visitor arriving by car? Thank you.
Did you want to respond to that?
If I, in two double act form, I'll take the parking and the traffic and my colleague will do the cycle parking one. So on the parking and the, taking the staff travel first. So yeah, what happens is the operator will adhere to the travel plan, which will have various measures within it, it's not just the minibus. And then they lay on the minibus if they think the staff need it to do drop-offs and pickups. It's very flexible depending on what the staff pattern and where people live and all of those sorts of things. And in terms of maximum parking, we, part of the traffic work we do is about working out what the maximum accumulation would be at any one point in time. And the parking's derived from that maximum accumulation plus some extra spaces. So it's really designed to accommodate those ebbs and flows in a day. You'd really like to think people got a lot of visitors. It's a really sad state. There's actually visitor numbers, it's not one for one. As sad as it may be.
In terms of cycle parking, there is cycle storage provided on sites. So there is provision provided by the main entrance, which are uncovered, and then there are covered storage areas further within the site for staff or visitors to utilise.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chair. Two things. First one is, again, parking. With regards to staff who will presumably might wish to drive in, are any of these 20 places for the staff? Or are they just parking in a different area? That's the first question.
The parking is for staff and visitors. Residents generally in the last three years have applied, so they're not in a position to be driving. So the parking is shared and unallocated in order to be flexible as needed.
With regards to the parking again, I noticed that you said there's a high quality structure they have been put on. How many EV points will you be putting in?
We were proposing electric charging points, you mean. We were proposing two, but we're quite happy to condition more if the committee thinks it's sensible. It seems to be the way we're going and should be heading, so happy to do more if needed.
I have a few questions. I'll have to be honest, when I looked at it, I thought, gosh, that's large. Then on design and layout, it said, the design has been determined by to provide a high standard of living accommodation. So there will be 60 residents. And what is it that requires the sort of size and bulk of the building?
So as Kate said really, gone are the days thankfully, where we just put residents in a room to watch TV all day. This is about providing rooms that are on suites and they are more than just a bed in a room. They're about providing a quality space. So you need the corridors, you've got big enough bedrooms, bigger than the standards, you need big corridors so that you can get maximum use around them. And then you need lots of variety of communal spaces. So it isn't just everybody in one room, but you've got various different opportunities throughout the space for people, small groups to congregate, or there's living rooms and there's dining. And then obviously you need the kitchen and backup space to make everything work. So it's much more than just 60 bedrooms.
Thank you. And then as regards the siting of the building, which presumably is your choice, is it? It is much further forward than the current pub facility. Why would that be?
The designers had evolved essentially with discussions with the design review panel and they wanted us to make the most use of the garden areas to the rear for residents. So essentially, the layout has evolved to make the most opportunity from that.
Thank you. And finally, from me, the landscaping on the Portsmouth Road seems to be less than it is further around the corner. Is there any reason for that?
Essentially, it's a similar sort of layout to as the current pub on site. So there is a more open field to the development at this viewpoint. We are happy and open to accommodate some additional landscaping at this point. But essentially, residents do like to see what's going on and that's part of what they enjoy to see in everyday movements. So obviously that's an element that can be considered as well.
Thank you, thank you. And I didn't quite hear the answer to the electric vehicle charging points. Are you providing those or?
So we're proposing two, but more than happy to do more than that if we need to.
Thank you. Just sort of on a technical note, I've tried turning my microphone off and that seems to make the echo worse, so I've left it on. But there is a lot of feedback, isn't there, going on, which is making it quite difficult. Can we sort that out?
I'm trying to work out what it is Chair, but...
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So that brings us to the end of the public participation. Liz, anything that you want to pick up on, on what you've heard?
No, thank you Chair.
No. So we'll start with principle of development, which is on page 19 and 20. I have a question there. We're told at the bottom of page 19 that the development does not meet the criteria of MTRA 4. But given that the site is occupied by a facility and service, a care home comes under that category and that can be considered as acceptable. Does that apply to no matter what the size of the replacement? Because the proposal is much bigger than the current pub facility.
The use refers to the site as a whole. Whilst the pub building, although sizable, is smaller than the proposal, the car parking and all the rest of it forms part of the use of that site. So this is a replacement of one facility with another facility that's in accordance with local planning.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So we'll move on then to design and layout.
Sorry Chair.
Councillor Blaming and then councillor Reed, sorry.
Okay. With the existing site being a pub, what are the traffic movements compared to, for that particular establishment compared to what we're proposing on this one? Is it any more or any less?
From the transport statement, it's significantly less to the current proposal that the pub would have generated.
Councillor Reed?
Yeah Chair, the parish council brought up MTRA 1 as being a reason, yet no reference in the report other than that has mentioned MTRA 1.
Yes, MTRA 1 is the overarching principle of development and the location of development. And this site would actually fall under MTRA 4 and as a countryside location. And those would be the specific policies that we would relate to. We've acknowledged that MTRA 4, this wouldn't normally be acceptable in the countryside, but due to its being a local service or facility, then we...
Sorry Chair, I was only concerned that the parish council had brought up MTRA 1. I think it ought to be right that an explanation be given as to why that did not appear in the report and that explanation is not being regarded.
And Liz, you want to add to that?
Yes, well, we can certainly refer to it, but it is a very, as I say, overarching policy. It's, it does say, well, they've referred to appropriate scale, so it's got to exceed the capacity of existing services and infrastructure. If that's the section that we're particularly concerned. I mean, this has been assessed in terms of its impact on highways and the site. And you know, the, of the conclusion or the council recommendation or my recommendation is that it is in accordance with that policy. I mean, we can refer to it in more depth if that's necessary. But it's also included subsequently in MTRA 4 and the policies within CP6. So it has, those elements have been assessed, but not specifically under MTRA 1.
Yeah, I think it's important to bring up the objections of the parish council. Are you happy with the reply?
A reply has been given Chair, so everyone's happy with it, that's a reply.
So we'll move on then. Oh councillor Pearson and councillor Roger. Councillor Gillings?
Yeah, there's...
Yeah, this is... Actually, no, this is effectively a landfill site, it's obvious. Landfill going back to the 12th century. There is on the edge of the bunch created in order to dam the vicious pond bank. Now, has there been any concession related to that site, historic site, as a result of that? Example drainage of the sites. I've noticed that some areas are going towards Eastleigh. Lough of Winchester, to understand, will that direction stream though for the Camberford Fishes Pond? Now, are there any comments you can make about the fact that this effectively is a historic site related to Harrowland?
When the application first came in and as a potential, I did talk to the archaeological officer, as a matter of course. I mean, her view at the time was that, I mean, she'd provided me with some notes which I can read out, but we didn't feel it was necessary to consult her formally. She said the site had been developed. It was unlikely to have been historically significant in the first instance. And certainly there wasn't going to be anything there at the present time. I mean, she said it's situated to the south of the pond bank, beyond the drains. It won't affect the village or fish pond. And given the existing development, the extensive previous ground disturbance was in an area considered to have functioned as part of a rural agricultural landscape around the fish ponds. And she didn't think that there aren't any archaeological proposed objections to the proposal.
Would you support paying an archaeological watch when there's a strike out of the building considering the current commission? These buildings are creative because the landfill is brought in. It takes back to Henry II, Bishop of Winchester, fish ponds before Henry VII. The natural is moved from where Niall and Mary is to that site. Now, I clearly, and I'm a little bit saxon, so suggesting a condition requiring an architectural watch, not a taking a watch.
A watching brief? We can put it to the applicant, I think that they would probably be prepared to accept that. But the advice from the archaeological officer is that it's not like, it's a kilometer to the east of the motive manor site. And they think it's highly unlikely that there will be anything there.
I was just saying to Councillor Pearson that I thought it was in the informative, but I must be confusing that with another application. But could there be something in the informative regarding a watch, is that?
Yeah, probably. We could certainly add an informative about watching.
Would that be okay?
Yes, I think as long as the possible risk factors of the site's raised fish ponds is recognized, I think that's important.
So with the committed agreement, when we come to that stage, we'll put that in as an informative. And then a Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. Just given the climate emergency that the city council has declared, was there any consideration at all of repurposing and extending the existing building rather than demolishing it? Please, thank you.
I think we've heard the explanations about the reason for the number of bedrooms and the size of it. I think in terms of repurposing the existing building in that location, they would not have been able to achieve the layout and design that would provide the maximum benefit for the patients in this location or the other numbers that are required for, you know, economies of scale viability. So the existing building is set much further back into the site and you wouldn't have been able to provide the secure part of what has been achieved by pushing the site, the building out a bit further. So I don't think that would have been the viable proposition.
So we've now got to design and layout. Could I just check over the footpath, the new footpath? Because I didn't, I am having trouble hearing some of the answers today, I have to say, because of the echoes. This has been brought up. So the footpath is actually on the pavement and is separate to the cycle link, is that correct?
Sorry, yes, Chair. There isn't pavement there at the moment. So basically, as a result of this proposal, they are going to create a new pavement and footpath area which runs around the corner next to the cycle link on the cross edge.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that in the photo, but it's separate to the cycle and not encroaching.
Page 38 sort of shows where it's going.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to check. Members, any other questions on that section? Councillor Reed?
Sorry, if one looks at page 37, it shows the red boundary around the proposed site. The landscaping that is adjacent to the B2177, which is in front of that line, is that Hounchy County Council in that case, or is it part of the development?
It's on highways land, but they are included in the 278 agreement with Hampshire County. So they can create the footpath on the highways land and that's part of the 106.
Thank you.
Could we go on to the two impacts? So page 21, 22. So impact on the character of the area and impact on neighbouring properties.
Councillor Appleton?
Thank you, Chair. In the introduction to this paper, it's been established that this is a countryside location. And yet, the transport assessment relates to, and I quote, 'provision for care homes in similar suburban edge of town locations.' And I'm wondering whether, because I do still have concerns about the adequacy of the parking. And I wonder whether this, what status this quotation has and whether there are perhaps any precedents or standards for parking at rural care homes that might be more appropriate in this context.
Thank you.
When they refer to edge of, I mean, it is in the countryside because anything outside the settlement boundary falls within the countryside. So you could have something immediately adjacent to the Colton Common settlement boundary, but it would still be in the countryside, but perhaps you would think it was more well related to the village. This isn't a long way from the, from Colton Common settlement boundary. And I think that they have turned this therefore edge of settlement for the purposes of their transport assessment. I haven't got a copy of the transport assessment here. I think there are higher requirements for rural areas. But in this case, given it is a far distance from Colton Common, there are public transport facilities up here at the camp. The parish say about the regularity of buses in the location. But it's on a busy road junction. So there are characteristics that would make it more edge of settlement than deepest, darkest rural countryside. So I think that the transport statement is justified in that process.
Care homes are a similar location, not a brand new care.
Yes, Councillor Pearson. Yes, we can't hear what you're saying, so.
It's just the, the, there is a care home in St Scrooge in a similar location, equally one on my brand new care, which is literally a boundary between Chalcedon and Osborne in a similar location.
Yeah, okay. My vice chair is saying, bring this up in debate. So there being no further questions, we'll just do the other matters here. So that's landscape and trees, highways and parking, we have touched briefly on. And then there's nitrates as usual, sustainability and health facilities. And anything else that you want to ask questions on, so anything else on the rest of the report? So we're into debate. Any debate? Councillor Pearson?
I might just start off.
Want to try your microphone again because it's being recorded.
Okay.
I found, I found moving back away from it and not a solution.
I'm quite happy doing that. Yes, I mean, this is an interesting location because it is, as the parish council, council said, it's on a busy junction. Therefore, traffic noise and air pollution would be issues. Now, traffic noise is dealt with within the planning office reports, apparently the building code. They are using double glazing, and I think the phrase is living quarters for the people, which I assume corridors and open spaces would not have that double glazing. The, it's interesting, there's a walkway around the site along the back of the building, because the front is on the far side from the road. Around the front, so there's the garden area around there as well, which is backed by woodland. I like the additional tree planting that's gone in to reinforce what is already there. Because effectively when you're in the Queen's Head, you virtually can't see that the fish is on the pond. Nor can you see the building which is next door, which used to be a diesel repair outfit. You can, on the other hand, see the houses on the opposite side of Portsmouth Road. There's an office there, a house there. But I don't think, other than clearly they can see that, that would impact visually. Not quite sure about the comments about the bus service because there's a regular bus service from Winchester to Fair Oak and south from Watley. Equally, the 69 actually goes from Fair Oak through Fair Oak towards Vicious Waltham. There are other buses that go down the Portsmouth Road. So it is, there is a bus service there, which I presume the agents have taken into account. The thing that worries me most about this, although clearly from what I'm saying, I'm more in favour of this, worries me most, the fact that this was effectively a landfill site, albeit what is 900 years ago. And there's got to be some acknowledgement that that actually is a dam that holds Vicious Pond Bank. It's not a natural dam, it's not a fisher dam, which an equally, this is where the nitrates come in, which is dealt with quite adequately in Liz's report. I understand mitigation of the nitrate from the site is dealt with, being dealt with by a site not named in Eastleigh. I don't know whether that's linked with their proposed development of Bishopstoke, which goes across the bank here. That's not directly relevant. So on balance, I'm in favour of this. As I say, 60 beds, the parking, the homes that I've been to when I was mayor, it's a pretty standard amount of parking for a development of this size, a care home of this size. I think of one a week where parking is fewer than 20 and yet the actual site is the wall that's there. St Scrooge has got more parking, Reddick Care, very similar number of parking places. So it's very difficult to say, oh, there's not enough parking when we've got lots of examples around where it's a similar amount of parking.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. Any other debate? Councillor Reed?
I was hesitating because Councillor Rutter had a hand up, but nonetheless. I do have some concerns, Chair. The MTR A4, once again, is an interpretation job. Whether we've got the right interpretation or not of this, I'm not 100% certain. Public transport is an issue because staff getting to and from, unless there's going to be a staff car park stationed somewhere else and the minibus would run backwards and forwards to that. I can't see a minibus running around with staff all over the place. I would have thought there'd be a static place. Nonetheless, the EV units, yes, if this is accepted, I would like to see a doubling the number of the EV units that have been indicated would be fitted. So instead of to make it four. My main concern though is the huge size right on the corner of the Portsmouth Road and the other road. It is a huge, huge block that's going to suddenly appear. As already stated, it's going to be closer to the highway than the existing structure is. So that in itself is going to make it more imposing. I like what the intention is with regards to the panels on the roof. I think that's absolutely fine. I just have concerns about the size of this particular structure. And let's face it, it is in the countryside, whether we like it or not, that's where it is. If we wanted to build something else there, I would be hesitant as well. So it is, it just cheers on us and my.
Thank you. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I did have several concerns about this proposal, most of which have been adequately addressed and in question. So thank you to the officer and the agents and indeed the parish council for coming along. There is obviously a need for this sort of provision and we need to make sure that we meet that need. I am concerned that our current local plan does not require that perfectly good existing buildings should not be demolished but be repurposed. And I don't think it's beyond the wit of designers to have done that in this case with the existing pub. If they had to, obviously they're going to demolish and rebuild if they can, because that's the easy option. But I don't think in this climate emergency time that we should be doing that sort of thing. However, that is not in our local plan at present and therefore is not a reason that one could refuse this application. I would support Liz to double the charging points, but I would also propose that there was the potential for more actually built in. So that although the charging points were not there, the underground works were done at the time of construction. Because I am sure that within the next 10 years, most of us will be driving electric vehicles and not all of them will require a charging at once, but a good proportion of them will appreciate that facility. So given the whole aspect of it, I don't think that there are any planning reasons to refuse. And I would like to commend the design and the attempts that were made, the work that's gone into making this an attractive and a good place for people to finally return to. So thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? I would just like to add that this pub, the Queen's Head, has obviously been struggling for years now. They tried changing the name, changing the colour. It went to sort of green shade at one stage. And so one understands really that although I share Councillor Rutter's disappointment at the building going, I do understand that it was time then to move on. There are care homes, empty, one just at the end of my road. Possibly not all singing and all dancing ones that this is going to be. So I do welcome the comments that it's going to be sort of a very nice living accommodation for the residents. Yes, concerns over parking. I understand that there will be a minibus to bring staff, as long as that works. Because it is in the middle of the countryside, it is a very rural location. And like Councillor Reed, I share concerns over the size of it. It's very in your face, you know, as you have to slow down anyway to turn right. as you have to slow down anyway to turn right into Cottesham Common. And it takes up all of that corner on both roads. And yeah, well, I accept that that size is needed because they need that to provide the facilities that they want to give the residents. I was going to mention landscaping on the Portsmouth Road, but I accept that residents like to look out and see what's going on. So I'll leave that. But I wanted the committee's agreement, should this be approved, to an informative put-on about an archaeology watch, as suggested by councillor Pearson. And then several people have mentioned electric vehicle points. And I believe that can be conditioned as well. So are those two differences to the conditions, are those agreed by the committee?
Agreed.
So we move then to the conditions. This application has been recommended for approval subject to the conditions on page 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30 and 31, with informatives on page 31, 32. And we have added in an extra informative and an extra condition. So all those in favour of approving this application, could they please share?
Eight in favour, Chair.
Against?
One against.
So that application has been approved. I just would like to crave five minutes indulgence to try and have a conversation about the echo and then we need to have a conversation about public participation. Thank you very much indeed, members of the public coming along today. Thank you. So we're just taking a quick five-minute break. We'll have a coffee break after the next one.
Test, 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 test. Test, test, test. Test, test, test. Test, test, test.
Members, can we get back to our places? Do we need to wait a day? Matthew?
Just got to see the members of the public for the follow-up.
Oh, I see, yes, because we haven't gotten there. So are we ready to start, members? We've tried to sort out this echo and we think we've found the cause of the problem, but can't solve it. Because little microphone, little sort of speaker in front of you, or the speakers, it comes out of the speakers there and then it's coming out of there as well. So work ongoing. I have found that if you feel that your voice is echoing, if you just distance yourself a bit from the mic away, actually, that seems better, that something can switch on. It does make it slightly better. But we're aware that that's not ideal when we are working on it. So we now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is agenda item 8, the erection of three dwelling houses with associated landscaping, access and parking, and Rutland House, 9 Park Road, Winchester. We undertook a site visit here fairly recently, last week, I think, and all members present here were at the site visit. Not all members present today were present at the last meeting. But the last meeting was held. And if we have a site visit, then we start again. So there was some confusion, I understand, over public speaking. But in theory, you have to re-register if you want to speak because this is the application again. And Mrs Burnley, I understand that you thought that I had told you that you could speak without registering. I wouldn't do that, but anyway. To avoid any confusion, I am using my discretion to let you speak in the objector slot, is it? Yeah. And a letter was sent to you informing you of the arrangements, but it was sent by post and who knows what's happened to that. So the case officer for this application is Verity Murphy. When you're ready, Verity.
Thank you, Chair. The application site is shown in red on the location plan. On the satellite image, the application site is shown here. The surrounding development is residential in nature and to the north of the site is the King's Barton Development. This photograph here is of the front elevation of Rutland House and it's taken from Park Road. This top plan shows four houses, which is previously approved by planning committee. Like this proposal, the houses were in the rear garden of Rutland House. This bottom plan shows the original plans, which were submitted in the 2019 application. And this application also proposed four houses on the site. This is the proposed site plan now. In response to officer and neighbour concerns, the number of dwellings on the site has been reduced to three. They're still located to the rear of Rutland House and will be located on a north-to-south axis. This is a proposed street perspective. So we've got Rutland House here, plot one, plot two, plot three. This bottom photograph is taken in the rear garden looking back at Rutland House and this is where the dwellings will be located. Here we have a photo of the eastern boundary. So the new dwellings will be located in front of this boundary and will face westwards in the plot, as shown in the proposed street scene below. The largest house, plot one, is set on the highest part of land and that is closest to Rutland House. The heights of the roofs then decline towards plot three, which is the dwelling nearest to the boundary with the King's Barton Development to the north. These are the proposed elevations for plot one. So we've got the front, the rear and the two-side elevations. The plans originally showed normal windows on the rear elevation, but in response to neighbour concerns, they were removed and replaced with high-level roof lights. These are the floor plans of plot one. So the accommodation is over three floors. Plot one is the largest of the dwellings and will have five bedrooms. Plot two is in the middle of the site. Here are the elevations for that. So we have the front, the rear and the two-side elevations. Again, the accommodation is across three floors, but plot two will have three bedrooms, so two on the first floor and one on the second floor. And here we have plot three. So we have the front, the rear and the two-side elevations. So the north-west elevation is the one facing onto the King's Barton Development and both of these windows will be obscured glass. Again, we have accommodation on the ground, first and second floor, and plot three is a three-bedroom property as well. This photo is taken looking back at 9 Park Road, which is here. The bottom photo is of the western boundary of the site. This photo is taken looking to the west at Witchwood Place. So this dwelling is three stories and about 20 metres away from the proposed new houses. Here we have the eastern boundary and you can see the existing vegetation along there. These two photographs are taken looking north to King's Barton. So this dwelling here is the nearest one to the application site, but it's about 20 metres away from the boundary. So this will be, this top photo shows the access, so it will be to the west of the existing property. This photograph is taken looking back at Rutland House from Park Road. So there will be glimpses of the development from this location. The bottom photograph shows the three-story dwellings which are in Witchwood Place, which is next door to the application site. This top photograph shows the existing relationship between the three-story dwellings in Witchwood Place and the King's Barton Development. This relationship was found to be acceptable and previously approved by committee, and the application proposal is very similar to this. This bottom photograph is an example of the type of landscaping which will be erected on the boundary between plot three and King's Barton Development to the north. The application is recommended for approval, Chair, and that's the end of my committee presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we move on to public participation. And we have one objector and two supporters. And no need to move, it's slightly different from the last time. And so, you have three minutes. If you're sharing, could you make sure that you... At the end of three minutes, I shall ask you to stop. So, if you both want to speak, could you make sure that you have the opportunity to do so? So, the first public speaker is Mrs Burnley. Good morning, Mrs Burnley. And when you're ready, you should be able to see the clock on the screen, and when you start speaking, the clock will come on.
Good morning, and thank you for coming to do a site visit. I'm not sure why Verity Murphy didn't describe 22 Witchwood Place, which is on the western boundary. It's actually only five metres from the boundary line, and it's a two-story dwelling. When you walk onto Witchwood Place and turn right to access number 22, it is striking how tall and imposing Rutland House is from this sunken position. It is set at a much higher elevation, and the proposed three-story dwellings are of comparable height to that house, being nearly 12 metres tall. 22 Witchwood Place will be overlooked by both first- and second-story bedroom windows. The planning department states that there is precedence for three-story dwellings on Witchwood Place. The key difference is that the block of flats shown were built on excavated land at the same ground level as number 22, and it is only one story higher with no overlooking. No ground levels are stated on these plans because they want to build houses 12 metres tall and at an elevated position, compounding the impact of these buildings. At the last meeting, there was reference to the 2006 application by Beale Homes. This was effectively an extension of Witchwood Place, which was being built by them at the time. In 2006, there were open fields on the northern boundary, which have now been lost to the King's Barton Development. The 2006 proposal comprised of a run of four terrace houses with a mix of two-bedroom houses at each end and two four-bedroom houses in the middle. The scheme was on an excavated east-west axis, and the height of the central terraces was less than nine metres tall. It's not on an elevated north-south axis. Importantly, access was from Witchwood Place and not from Park Road. This therefore had built-in visitor parking, turning space for furniture lorries and emergency vehicles, and onsite refuse collections from Witchwood Place, none of which have been provided for in this current proposal by Alfred Homes. In 2019, they wanted to build four houses only nine metres tall. They now want to build three houses which are up to 12 metres tall, three metres higher than their first application. To say that neighbours were consulted about this is simply untrue and disingenuous of criteria to suggest otherwise. There have been 15 public objections to this scheme. The proposal is not for a mixture of dwellings, but more executive homes. There is no interest in sustainability or providing accommodation for essential key workers who work in our city. To conclude, there is no compelling reason why these properties need to be so tall and to the detriment of existing homeowners in neighbouring properties.
Could you please finish your sentence?
Yeah. We feel that this application should be rejected, and the developer resubmit plans for more affordable, less imposing houses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there could be questions of clarification from the committee? But no, there doesn't seem to be. So, thank you very much. And so, we move on to supporters. We've got Chris Rees, who's the applicant. Good morning. And Charles Browning.
Yes, I won't be speaking.
You won't be speaking, okay. But you can answer questions, should there be questions, and you know the answers more than Chris, which is probably not the case. So, Mr Rees, when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief, obviously. We've numbered the councillors have heard on one of these points before. Just to respond to some of the comments from the objector, the previous consent by this committee on this site, the houses within the central part of that terrace was 11 metres tall. So, it's the same height as what's been proposed today. And the original application in 2019, those properties were also the same height. In fact, I think plot four on that occasion, because you would have seen from the drawing, I think was slightly higher than what's proposed now. So, we're looking at 11 metres and not nine in terms of it was approved previously, and what is proposed now. So, to recap, due to the determination of the application, we've worked with your officers and responded to the comments received by reducing the number of houses from four to three. We've also worked with the neighbours to rearrange the internal configuration of the houses. It has quite an impact on how we then position the windows and how we were able to obscure windows as well by bringing bathrooms forward and looking at where dressing rooms are located. So, that's an exercise that we've gone through, and we're available therefore to obscure the dormable windows within the roof facing to the west, and we have valux windows only on the rear. You'll have seen from the site visits that the relationship between the properties and what's proposed here is identical. There isn't anything new that we have proposed and that hasn't already been approved by this committee. When you do go down into Witchwood Place and turn left, it's in fact, it's the objector's property that sits next to 22 Witchwood Place, and Rutland House is beyond that. And those two houses are the same scale. In summary, Chair, there's no objections from any of your consultees to this application. The access has been approved by the Scottish County Council, and against your policies in the development plan, your officers have recommended approval. I would therefore respectfully ask that the application be approved today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of clarification? Councillor Leaming, and then Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. This council has declared a time emergency and we've put policies in place that may be seen clear. Now, are you going to be building these properties to that sustainable level?
Chair, certainly. We comply fully with your regulations and policies. We go through a quite a detailed assessment, and of course, it's changing regularly as well. So, as your policies change, our construction techniques change as well.
Yes, but are you going to be building to, say, level five?
They'll be built to your standards, which is completely agreeable.
I don't know if you're going to build into level five or level four.
No, we'll be building to level four, which is your standard.
Yeah, we're not actually coming up to the standards that we wish to attain.
Chair, with respect, we build to the building regulations required of us. And if the council wished to go beyond that, then it's within our building regulation process to do that.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Rees, you stated that the original planning application, the houses, the proposed houses then were 11 metres in height. Mrs Burnley indicated that because of the different land levels, they would have been dug in. Are you now saying that they would not have been dug in?
They wouldn't have been dug in, Councillor Reed. If you, maybe Miss Murphy, you could put the drawing back on the screen for you? Previously, we placed the smallest house, which was a two-story property next to Rutland House, and then we extended as we went down the slope with the height of the properties. So, the properties got higher as you went down the slope. The urban design officer asked us, could we change that position? And so, we reverted to have... So, you can see the roof line at that point, Councillor Reed, goes along, and you've got two-and-a-half-storey properties, or the property three, sorry, two, three, and four. So, where the nine-metre reference is coming from, I suspect the objectors refer into plot one, which is the property next to Rutland House. We were asked to change this by your officers and have the roof line fall as you come down the slope. So, there's been no change to dig in in properties. We've benchmarked against the approval from before, but there's been a major change in terms of the roof line from the original application.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Councillor Rutter.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask about bin storage and cycle storage? And your building to code four, does that include solar panels on every roof? Thank you.
Yeah, very much so. Every house will have solar panels. They'll be on the rear of the property. So, we always try and put them on the rear if we can. We also use the garages as well where we can to maximise the area we can place the solar panels. Each house has a garage. We always oversized our garages to allow for cycle storage within the garages. Then the bin collection point will be on the driveway as you leave the site, and so the collection will be from the road. And so, they'll just take the bins to the collection points once a week, and they'll be collected by the bin man, like every house is on Park Road, is collected. Thank you.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Rees, one of the issues we were looking at on the site visit was the, was it 14 feet of blank wall that faced King's Barton? There are two windows in there, but there's a lot of brickwork. Have you considered putting some more decorative brickwork on that side, which would help to relieve the blankness of that wall? An example, I just walked past, actually, by Cheshwood Car Park Road. I won't say that, but it's unusual brickwork, which relieves the... Have you considered that?
I'd say quite a lot.
Is it possible?
It is possible. The drawings don't show that at the moment. It is something we can look at and work, or even when we deal with materials, work with your officers to provide that. And I think as part of the scheme, we've looked at in a bit more detail at this stage the type of plant that we're putting along there as well. And we've been recommended pitch trees to go in along that boundary to soften that relationship.
Exactly. That's, I know, that's further negotiation with the officers. But it's not a change in the planning application.
No, no.
It's just brickwork. I'm told by Ricky was on site by Cheshwood Car Park. It just takes a little bit more time, it doesn't cost any more.
No, it just needs to be planned ahead, that's all. And certainly, I'll make a note of it, and we'll look into it. Thank you.
Thanks. Take care.
Councillor, still to get that this session is being recorded. So, I know it's difficult when, as I say, you're talking to the neighbours, but if you're talking to the right people, otherwise... I'm not doing that now either. Otherwise, I'll get complaints. Councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Rees, plot three, which I think is the plot closest to Bolton Farm, I understand it's being built within one metre of the boundary. Firstly, could you confirm it is one metre? Secondly, could you confirm the elevation from the garden level of the Bolton Farm residence closest to the building to the peak of the elevation of that property?
It would be slightly over one metre, because we certainly need the minimum of one metre for scaffolds. So, it would be slightly over that. But you're right, it's not significantly more than that. In terms of the change of levels, 11 metres to reach, so in terms of the roof, the highest point. And I believe it is a metre, metre-and-a-half drop to the other side of the property. So, you're looking at circa 12, 12 and a half metres?
Can I come back on that, Chair?
Yes.
Having visited the site, I believe the drop from the ground level on the plot that you're building to the ground level in the garden is significantly more than one and a half metres. I'd be happy to visit and confirm that, but I'd like you to just reconsider that answer. Because I've seen it. It is more than one and a half metres to the garden level.
Chair, I'm not permitted to go into private land to measure. And what Carla Holmes has done in terms of levelling that garden from my ability to look into it, since the fence has gone up, might have changed. You've got an advantage having visited the site last week, and we've assessed it when I've been there. That's an honest answer of my perception of changing levels between the two.
And so, having been there, my view, I did not measure it, but I can judge distance moderately well.
Okay.
I believe the ground level of the garden is between four and five metres below the ground level where you would be building. Therefore, the elevation from that garden will be somewhere between 15 and 16 metres high.
May I come back on that point? If it was four to five metres, it would be half a house, if not up to like a first-floor window of a property. So, I would question the notion that it's four to five metres changing level. With respect, Councillor.
Yeah, I'm going to stop that there, Councillor Westwood, because really, these are probably questions for the case officer. And as Mr Rees has said, he's not responsible for the building the other side of the fence, and we did go there. Any more questions of clarification on what you've heard today? No? Okay. So, thank you very much, Mr Rees and Mr Rutland. No, Mr Browning. Sorry. Named you after the house. So, we move on to questions. And I've been reminded that this is an open and transparent process. So, if you asked members questions on-site, which members of the public and the recording couldn't hear, please, could you ask them again, even though you know the answer? So, we move on to principle of development. Could I just ask, Verity? The previous history says that there were two previous applications, one where the 106 wasn't signed, and one with one more house than current application. Were they, was the layout the same, or did they go in a different manner across the plot?
Thank you, Chair. So, the 2006 application, which was for houses, went in the opposite direction. So, that was east to west in the terrace of four properties. The 2019 application was on the same orientation as this proposal on a north-to-south.
But with one less, one more house, yeah.
One more dwelling.
Any more questions on principle of development? Councillor Afell.
Thank you, Chair. I asked Verity, or Verity stated that the windows in the roof would be obscured, and I asked her if they would be opening, and she said she'd find out.
Thank you, Chair. Are you referring, Councillor Afell, to the dormable windows on the front elevations?
Yeah.
I haven't, I'm sorry, I haven't asked the applicant about that. So, I couldn't say if they're going to be non-restricted or restricted.
Chris, do you want to come in on that?
Of course. As a standard rule for obscure windows, we have the, to stop the opening, we have stripers placed in within them. So, it would defy the logic of an obscure window then be able to open. So, we put the stripers in all our obscure windows.
Okay? Yep. Right, so we move on then to design and layout. Oh, so sorry.
No, I think this might come under design anyway. Could I just clarify, Verity, that those high, those deluxe wind or whatever, windows, or not opening, but are they high-level? So, are they above sort of normal eye height anyway in the roof space? Am I right in thinking that's a...
That's why we want them obscured.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So, the roof lights on the rear, they are high-level roof lights, so they're above head height. I think, Councillor Afell, what you're referring to is the dormable windows which are obscured on the front. And then...
You are referring to the dormable windows, Councillor Rutter?
I understand now that some of them are and some of them aren't. But the ones that aren't high-level are obscured, so that's fine.
Yes, okay. Design and layout, page 59 and 60. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, one of the questions we're asking about, as you recall, was the closeness to the boundary. Now, looking back at the 2006 buildings, I know they're different orientation, but were they equally close to that boundary?
Thank you, Chair. So, the 2006 application, the dwellings were located more centrally in the plots. There was a bigger distance between the rear elevation of the proposed dwellings and the northern boundary with King's Barton Development.
Was there any landscaping in the previous application between the boundaries of buildings?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure. I don't get the detailed application inside out. I expect there was some sort of landscaping.
Okay, so we move on then to the impact on neighbouring property. Then could we go to landscape and trees and ecology? Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. The landscape plan for this application, does it exist or does it still want to be normal?
Thank you, Chair. So I have attached a landscaping condition to require those details prior to the commencement of works. However, after our site visit, I have got in touch with the agent. He's given an indication of what sort of landscaping would be installed on the site. So on the northern boundary with the King's Barton Development, there's going to be some pleach trees. So they go in at about 3.5 metres and will at maturity be about four and a half metres. And then along the western boundary with Witchwood Place, there will be a mix of, have a look. Maple and hornbeam, which will at maturity be approximately 15 metres in height.
Thank you, Chair. The most effective boundary, I would guess, is going to be the northern boundary. And the fact that there is only approximately one metre gap between the structure and the boundary fence. But it's what's been proposed there that is to a degree quite crucial, especially on the neighbouring properties.
Thank you, Chair. If I just go back to my committee presentation, I've got an image of what landscaping will look like along the boundary. So in this bottom image, these are pleach trees. So this is the type of boundary treatment that would be alongside plot three, so screening that from the Barton Farm Development.
Okay, Chair. I'll leave it until debate.
And I did ask on the site what would the eventual height of the landscaping be? And Verity's just answered that question. So we move on then to highways and parking and then everything else on the report. And on our update sheets, there is something about highways adding to the consultation with Hampshire County Council. Councilor Rutter.
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask my usual question about permitted development rights? Is it reasonable, given the constricted nature of this site, to require that permitted development rights for major work on the houses, I'm not talking about garden chests and things, but that exemptions and so on, should be required to go through the planning process rather than simply appear as permitted development? Can we include that in a condition, please, Chair?
I think we can remove certain classes from permitted development.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think we've talked about perhaps removing any classes A to D of Schedule One, which is extensions and alterations to the house itself, rather than any curtilage or outbuildings. Because that would probably be a little bit unreasonable in this respect. But if members believe that the principle is only subject to that condition, I don't think that would be unreasonable, Chair.
Could you just repeat the letters, A to D?
So A, B, C and D of the town of Cuthbert.
Which are major.
Which talk about alterations to dwelling and that's class A. B and C talk about roof alterations, I think, from class D, I think, with porches. But they're all about things that actually alter the fabric of the actual built form. And then class E is outbuildings. I don't think we should remove class E in this case, Chair, or other classes.
Thank you.
And I'll ask committee's approval for that when we get to that stage. Any other questions before we move into debate?
Yes, please, Chair. I should have answered it earlier. The fact that we're going to have on collection day up to eight bins at that entrance. Are our officers happy that it can be accommodated, even for a short space?
Eight on one day?
Well, it would be because you've got two bins per day.
Three boxes. There's only one collection that takes two.
Oh.
So is it? Is it six or three?
There's glass and recycling and what's the other one is the waste.
Oh, I see the boxes. Yeah.
You're going to have up to eight units.
Yeah.
Being accommodated. Can the site accommodate at the entrance eight units?
Thank you, Chair. The bin collection is the same for the other houses in Park Road. There are no highway safety issues with the applications. So I don't think that having potentially six bins on one day would cause any significant issues to the highway network.
It's a slight bend.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's the same also in the district. Any further questions? Debate. Councilor Lee.
Thank you, Chair. This application does raise some serious questions. I'm very disappointed on the level of sustainability, that we're only being building these places to the minimum standard possible. I have reservations of the height of the buildings relative to how much garden and the overlooking of which we've all placed. I have great concerns over the bin collections and the safety of people travelling on Park Road. So I would be listening to it pretty upset before I made that one line.
Councilor Rutter.
Thank you, Chair. I too was very concerned about this when it first came forward and was happy to go on a site visit to see the relationship of the proposed dwellings with existing homes, not only in Witchwood Place, but also those further down the hill in King's Barton. And there's no doubt that this, the particular plot number three, will dominate the view from the back gardens of those houses looking back up the hill towards Rutland House. But I don't believe that there will be any overlooking issues because the windows that do look out that way are going to be obscured glaze. So I think that that concern is not an issue. It's sufficiently far away, even though it's right on the boundary, that we can't say that that's a problem in planning terms. And of course, we have the huge planning precedent set by the previous applications which were approved on this site. And notwithstanding the fact that particularly for the first one, that it was overlooking fields, it was a completely different axis of development. So they'd have been looking at over countryside. Of course, it is a countryside in law. It's 2,000 houses of King's Barton. And those houses themselves are quite close together. And it's basically an urban landscape that these houses are going into. I feel very sorry for Rutland House. I feel an emotional attachment to the name at least, because I grew up in Rutland. And I've always looked at Rutland House as a sort of, you know, beautiful and wady of building. I'd love to live in, but never could afford it. But of course, now it's lost all its, will lose all its, the rest of its garden, which would be a shame, I think. But again, it's in an urban sit situation. And with that existing planning permission for development in the garden. That is a huge responsibility on us as the planning committee to look on this and to accept that that precedent has been set. And therefore, we have worked, and I commend the officers and the developer, who've both worked quite hard to change the design and to amend the design so that overlooking and such issues are addressed. So I will be supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. This is an interesting back garden development. And we've all had back garden developments in some form or other. This is one that is quite tightly packed. I did appreciate the site visit very much. We had the opportunity to visit two of the neighbouring properties. And looking at the King's Barton property first, there is a sizeable bank leading down to the new properties. I would put it between two to three metres in height, the bank. I didn't go and measure it. Maybe one should have done because that is awfully important. The huge difference on this application to the previous approved one was the fact that the houses had been turned round and the fact that the original, the last application had the back gardens. So any development on that raised site were pushed further back. So you didn't get this very stark structure standing right above your garden. Because in fact, that's what it does, as it is. Not terribly sure that the proposed landscaping is going to achieve a vast amount. Because with only a metre or thereabouts gap, drawing of anything there is going to be a problematical, to say. And plus the fact it's going to take away an access down the side of your house, presumably. So maybe the landscaping in a sense will come from the other side of the fence in order for them to obscure as much as possible this particular structure. What worries me a little bit is the fact that some applications require a landscaping plan as part of the application. In the past, we used to have landscaping plans and we used to discuss them, their merits. Of late, we're not getting these. And this is a property that a landscape plan is important on the application. I'm finding it a little difficult without the actual plan itself to be able to debate it and to criticise it and maybe improve it. Not that I'm not horticulturist by any respect, naturally. But landscaping is important in some applications. This is one where I think it is crucial that we had one. I'm very disappointed that we seem to have drifted away from what has been attached to planning applications. There's a couple more today as well, exactly the same. The fact that planning permission has been granted on this site does make life a little bit more difficult because you've proved that you would accept some structures on the land. I will reluctantly go along with the recommendation, but I would like to see in future landscape plans, crucial ones, attached to the planning application not to be provided after the event that we as members will not see. And I think that is important. We need to see them with no very crucial planning costs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, I welcomed the site visit. Thank you very much for arranging it. It was very useful. It certainly helped me to focus my mind, and I suspect other councillors as well, on what the issues were. It's, so there's two precedents, which Councilor Rees has mentioned. I won't go into the detail. I'll simply say what they are. One is that there already was an application on this site approved in 2006. I can't remember if I was on the planning committee at that time. Can you remember?
We're in debate. Not relevant.
So if I was, I can't go against what decision at that time. The other issue is the proximity of neighbouring houses to each other, Witchwood Gardens, which was useful exercise going on to that site. They were pretty close, not only to the boundary, but also to each other. And well, overlooking clearly was not an issue for the builders because all the glass was clear. So you could see through this. I mean, I find it a little bit perverse to suggest obscure glass for a bedroom or a living room. To me, that just doesn't register. For a vent, a vent window that you can see through, that's a different situation. They'll have to double the job cleaning that vent window if it's approved. Now, it goes back down to that dominant wall, which I refer to Mr. Rees to. I would like to see some form of affirmative if we're going to approve this, to break up the appearance of that wall in the sense of decorative brickwork or a green wall there. A presence. The only thing that Verity has mentioned as far as ecology on that site is bat boxes, hedgehogs and reptiles. Nothing that would make the recent comments report, today's comments report in actual fact, there's nothing about the flora on the site and replacement of that. Now, a green wall would go a long way towards that. Arguably, that's landscaping, and as Chair Reed says, unfortunately, we don't have that information in front of us. But it's not a yes or no because I don't have that landscaping that I would say, well, I can't make a decision on this. But certainly, I would suggest that we have an informative, either green wall there. I'm not saying a painted wall. I'm talking about actually living green wall there. I'm not, you know, we're not in Northern Ireland, so we can have graffiti or something on there. Although black space like that is good for decorative brickwork, which I think, I think with that would break up the aesthetically to my mind, it would make that wall much better. The other issue which we can't do anything about, Councilor Reed mentioned now, is there's no space between that building, well, one metre, which is just wide enough for a football, Witchwood Gardens, that space was a little bit, because there were mature trees on the other side of the boundary. This park has a lot of mature trees on that bank, which makes me worry a little bit about soil stability there. But that's a building regulations issue, which hopefully will be addressed. So it goes back down to something to break up the appearance of that wall. On balance, I'm in favour of this. I can't say I like it 100% because of the proximity to that northern boundary. But I don't think, I think we'd be accusing being a little bit perverse if we turned it down just on that point of importance, when there are other issues next door, where the houses are equally close to each other.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Bell, Chair.
Chair, as I've said, I appreciated the visit because it did make it clear what the areas like. And although those houses along that road seem to have sold off their back gardens and all the developments along there, this just seems to be filling in that extra bit of space. Point of contention for some people seems to be this northern boundary. But looking at the house in Witchwood Place, which overlooked the King's Farm, pardon Farm, sorry, that didn't look overbearing to me. I appreciate, Councilor Pearson, to point out, making green, that's not a bad idea. But it didn't seem that imposing today, and I'm quite happy with the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Westwood.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I also appreciated the visit.
Could you talk into the mic?
I also appreciated the visit, thank you. And I obviously have concerns on that northern boundary with the proximity of the wall. I think it would be more acceptable were the building further, slightly further up away from the boundary to enable some proper landscaping to be put in along there, just to alleviate the position there. I agree with everything that Councilor Reed said about the landscaping plan. I think that's vital on the site, including over the Witchwood Place site. So I'd like to see that landscaping plan in place. On balance, I again agree with Councilor Pearson. It's a difficult decision. But on balance, I think I have to support the planning there, the recommendation. But I do think the landscaping is key to making it acceptable to the neighbouring properties.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Adwa?
Thank you. I absolutely agree, comments made by councillor Pearson regarding the end wall. I hope some development there can mitigate its effect. And I take the points also about landscaping, the landscaping plans. On balance, I think that, especially bearing in mind the precedent, the history of this site, we should approve, and I shall vote in favour. But I do think that it's very, very close, in every sense of the word. Everything about this is close. It seems to me that it's trying to establish three houses of a building type and size that are absolutely pushing the boundaries of what's possible on such a small site, that impacts on so many different aspects. And I would feel happier if we had a proposal for smaller buildings, given the restrictions of the site. However, we are where we are, and I shall vote in favour.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Adwa?
Thank you, Chair. I'll stick my five eggs in. I think it's a well-designed scheme, and it deserves to get planned in wish.
Thank you. And just to make a full set, I'm not going to repeat anything that someone said. We have to take account of the history of the site and the changes that the applicant has made in order to fit in with the neighbouring properties. And it is a lovely house, and I'm sorry that it's losing its amenity space, as it were. It's still got some, but anyway, that's the way things are, because all the houses all around are new built properties which have built on someone's garden. So, you know, I don't think we'd have a leg to stand on refusing that. And we have looked at it from Barton Farm as well. There've been lots of concerns, Verity, about landscaping, which is condition four. So could I just ask you to make sure that, and where appropriate is a key word I know in condition four, that you look especially at the wall, and I saw the agent was writing notes, the wall and the boundary between the site and Kings Barton. Those seem to be the two concerns of members. And then we are going to propose an extra condition, should this application be approved. And that is to remove permitted, sorry, permitted development rights classes A to D, which are the major structures on the house, but not things like, you know, sheds and whatever. Is that agreed?
Agreed. Chair? Yeah, with your permission. I think we also wondered if you wanted to amend condition three, which is the one that talks about the provision of materials. So as we get some articulation of that side elevation of plot three, which the agent indicated they'd be willing to install with your offices, how that elevation with brick detailing could be. So we'll just add in a few words there to include the details of the brickwork to the side elevation of plot three.
So it would improve this then?
Sorry, I'm not quite with that. So condition three is about damp course. Condition three is, at the stage when they're ready to construct the damp roof course, they have to submit details of the materials they're going to use, the brickwork, for the bricks. So we would expect samples at that stage.
Oh, it's the materials, yeah.
And at that stage, what we're also suggesting, as the agent indicated, agreement, is that we could just look, I think it was councillor Pearson's suggestion, to that end elevation that ties on to the Kings Barton properties. There's some detailing in the brickwork there, and we don't have that now. But if you were minded to agree that as amendment to condition three, so we could clear those details.
Yeah, that's fine, but I thought that would have covered that anyway, but yeah, whatever.
It's just for clarity.
Bottom brick, yeah. Yeah, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. So this application has been recommended for approval subject to the alteration or the sort of reconfirming condition three and condition four we've mentioned, and also adding a new condition about permitted development rights classes A to D. So all those in favour of approval of the application, please share.
A, Chair.
And those against?
One against. Thank you.
So that application is approved. So members, we have one more application to do, but we're going to take a break now. Now, we do have a room assigned to us, which is the former canteen. So you can make coffee down there yourselves. There's milk and coffee and sugar and whatever. Do you wish to do that?
I'm going, Chair.
Okay, so you're going to need twenty minutes to get down there and get back up. So that's fine. So we will reconvene in twenty minutes' time, which is ten two by that clock.
No, that's five two.
And it could be five two by your wishes. On your marks.
Lawrence, you know where you're going, don't you?
Yeah.
Well, it was in the main sitting's office block. Is it the main sitting's office block?
Kingsbury, 20/02225/FUL. This is the development of two detached and two semi-detached dwellings and demolition of the existing built bungalow. The case officer is Megan Osborne. Looking to see whether it was good morning or good afternoon. It's good morning, Megan. When you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Good morning. Did everyone hear me all right? This site is located within the village of Kingsbury, to the east of the railway track and to the west of Springvale Road. The existing dwelling on the bottom of the site, number 22 Springvale Road, is set back within the site with a long access drive leading to it. The site is surrounded by a number of other dwellings, all in a mixture of sizes and designs. There are dwellings to the north on the pastures. These dwellings have their back gardens onto the site. There are dwellings to the east, which are also on the pastures. And these are on slightly higher ground. And there are dwellings also that lead off from the pastures down the driveway to the south of the site. The site is on a slope, slopes down from the west to the east. There's a lot of vegetation on the site. Some of it will be maintained and some of it will be removed. The application is for the replacement of the existing bungalow on the site and the development of four dwellings. There is sufficient parking on the site for all the dwellings and one visitor parking space provided. This is plot one. This is to the front of the site. It has two dormers to the rear and no dormers to the front. The dormers to the front have been removed as part of an amendment to the original scheme. And this is the floor pan of plot one. To the front, it's a two-bedroom dwelling. There is a window to the side of this elevation, but it sides on to the elevation of number 55. And there will be no looking as a result of this window. This is plot two. It's the central one in the site. It has two dormers to the front and two dormers to the rear. It is a three-bedroom dwelling with no windows on the side elevations. This is plot four for three and four to the rear of the site. As you can see, there are two dormers to the front of these dwellings and no dormers to the back. These are roof lights. This was an amendment to the original scheme as well. Both these dwellings are two-bedroom dwellings and have no windows on the side elevations. This shows a street scene of the proposal. So here in the centre is number 22, so the dwelling that would be proposed at the front there. And to the side, number 24, bungalows this way along Springvale Road. And then as you go along the other way along Springvale Road, you come to the pastures. And number 55, which runs onto the pastures. This is another section, looking the other way along the site. So to the left-hand side of the screen is the proposed plot one, and the central one is plot two, and at the back, plot three and four. And at the rear, this is fried cottages, this is onto the pastures. You can see the slope, the site sloping down here. The submission also includes an ecology report, which stated that two new sparrow boxes and two new swift boxes will be located on the dwellings. Condition 11 states that this ecology report shall be complied with. Let's take you through some photos. To the bottom of the screen, this is an artist impression of what plot number one would look like from the road. And this is a photo of the current situation. And this is the existing dwelling, number 22. And the plot one would be located to the front here. This is photos of the existing dwelling, number 22, further into the site. And this is standing at number 22, looking back towards Springvale Road, to the bottom of the site. And that's the long driveway. The photo to the left is the houses to the rear of the site, fried cottages, which front on to the pastures. And the photo to the right is the houses to the south of the site, which also feed or come off from the pastures as well. There were a few concerns regarding overlooking from the houses to the rear fried cottages. So from a site position, this is the rear elevation of fried cottages on the right-hand side of the screen. And the left-hand side of the screen is me standing at ground floor level, looking towards the site. And this is a section to show the situation between the two dwellings. So on the right-hand side is fried cottages. And then the left-hand side of the proposed dwellings, plot three and four, with the roof lights to the rear. You can see the level differences, slight slope between the two. The applicant has worked well with officers, making amendments to the scheme and to come up with a final development of four dwellings that is considered to be acceptable in relation to the character of the surrounding area and in relation to the surrounding residential amenities. Therefore, this application is recommended for approval subject to conditions as set out in my report and the signing of the section 106 in regards to the translocation of newt from the site. And in addition to the update sheet, it's proposed to have a condition to remove permitted development rights for classes A extensions, B and C roof alterations, and porches. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we have no public participation at all. So we will go straight into the planning considerations, starting on page 88 of the principle of development. No questions? So now design and layout and impact on the character of the area and neighbouring properties, page 88 and 89. No questions? So highways and parking, which is on page 90. And then all the rest of the report, landscaping, nitrate, ecology, and anything else that you want to ask about planning obligations and agreements. Could I just ask, Megan, about the bird boxes, which I see is condition... Well, anyway, you told us two sparrows, still eleven, two sparrows and two swifts. Are the swift boxes together or are they separate? Is that the swift boxes together?
Yeah, so the swift boxes are together on plot three and four at the back of the site. The sparrow boxes are together on plot number two to the middle of the site. No, sorry, to the plot number one to the front. And these are bats.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pearson.
Megan, thank you for what you've written here. Litigation for the fauna on the site, yes, useful. But there's nothing about the flora and landscaping, which to my mind would go somewhere about reaching a minimum of 10% gain in biodiversity, which is a definite requirement. Is there any more information we could add to that, which talks about restoration of biodiversity gain, other than just the safe transmission of reptiles from the sides, bat boxes, and... You missed that hedgehog box. I know there's a hedgehog box on one or another site, but this is not biodiversity gain. Is there anything else that's not here?
All the information is in the ecology report that was submitted, which you have
Which is just...
Yeah.
I know we can't turn it down based on that. So it's not a question of that, just despite... It's not your fault. If you haven't given the information, you can't say anything about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Any further questions? In which case we'll move into debate. Counselor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. This is in my order, although obviously I haven't had any discussions with anybody about it. Alec Fry used to live here, and he was a great gardener and wrote for about 50 years in the parish magazine about how to deal with your garden through the seasons. And his garden was a wonderful example of the best of cottage gardens. So it's a shame that we're going to see it built over, but that is the way of the world these days. And people with big gardens are few and far between these days. And again, it's a shame that this perfectly good bungalow is going to be demolished. And I'm sad that it couldn't be retained and repurposed. But that isn't in our policy at the moment, although I hope that we will seriously consider putting it in our new local plan. I'm delighted to see the proposal for swift and other bird boxes on the new houses. Can you stop chatting over there? And I'm delighted that we're now proposing the removal of section A to D, of section one of the permitted development rights, because this is a very small site for four new homes with amenity land. And I think that we need to ensure that it remains as it is in these proposals, without at least having an oversight of any more development here. So all in all, and given that there are no objectors and there's nobody here from this parish, and I believe that their concerns anyway have been covered by the report and the informatives and so on. So I will be supporting the officer recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I also will be supporting the application. I simply wanted to emphasise what I've just said previously to Megan. Next year, the biodiversity report would be expected to be much more detailed than that. A suggestion from NASA, a comment report about biodiversity came out yesterday, slating the government's movement environment bill, which is emerging. I'm no doubt Deprat will pick up on this and pointing out that biodiversity is not just a question of the animals on site, it's also about the flora game, which is so important if we're going to talk about climate emergency. Because in best world in the world, swifts, reptiles, and hedgehogs don't do much of absorbing carbon emissions for them. So it's not a criticism of you, Megan, because if you didn't have the information, there's not no way you could have commented on it. I'm simply formally addressing this comment, because I think it's something we're going to have to take on board in the future, Chair. And this is a, I may say so, a proper marriage between the landscape team and planning, where this is taken on board. And this is an example of why I think there's a growing dissatisfaction and concern.
Okay, thank you. Any further debate? This application has been recommended for approval, and conditions as set out in the report, plus an extra condition removing permitted development rights. Would it be A to D again? Is it? Yeah, A to D. It's the removal of the permitted development rights agreed, A to D. Thank you. And then this whole application then, with all the conditions, with the addition of that one, has been recommended for approval. All those in favour of approving this application, please, sure?
That's all members in favour, Chair.
Thank you. So that concludes the morning session. And our next application will be heard. heard at two o'clock. Thank you very much. And this is Dave's, this is not sort of a Frank Sinatra...